It looks like it is 6:30, so I will call the meeting to order. This is the December 18th, 2024 Mendon Select Board meeting. And just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded. Started that. Thank you, Katie. And if you could please stand and join me for the votes.
The United States, the Republic stands one nation under God, even if it's all liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a hearing scheduled for 6:35. And it is 6:35 on the posted on the website as well.
Yep.
Okay. So we will wait to start that because we don't want to. Or we should wait to start that, right? Even though it's a continuation.
So we can do like three.
So we will hop over to citizen statements and petitions.
So.
Item three.
So I just wanted to let the board be aware, if you hadn't seen email earlier. Received a communication from Lane and Hammer Law Firm on behalf of Robert Emilio Rgerio. The letter has been circulated to the board and it was a commentary on last meeting's public hearings. The law firm's opinion on what the board should do. So that is circulated to the board and is now part of the meeting.
Thank you. Any other citizen statements or petitions from anyone in the room or anyone online?
Can I, yeah?
Yeah.
Ask a question or an objective about that, that letter with your opinion. Some of it seemed to be stated as fact. I'm wondering what the process has just descended to our council, town council. Because of the things they stated. If I think it just, I don't, I didn't, I didn't think that it said that we couldn't. It just didn't view on the issue. So I would just like to, I'd like either one or two or county council to just weigh in on.
Yep, we can turn the sentence to town council. It's, this is the opinion of an organization stated to the.
Sure, but the part of the opinion is that there are certain things in the way I read it.
Right.
Couldn't be allowed. My question and my, my recollection of issues somewhat, not so much that it was prohibited. But it's viewed, doesn't mention that was that medium prohibited? Because I think the state law that would suggest that it is. So I just like our own movement.
I mean, I think it's back to clarifying the zoning. And I think there are a lot of carve outs around right to farm and what, what is, you know, considered agritourism and all that stuff. So I think clarity on that because a lot of what was music, selling crafts. Those are all things that appear to be allowed, but not stated. So I think clarity to your point.
Exactly. My question to town council, even in advance of this letter, after the, after the public hearing was. The table uses allows agriculture by brick farm, which means agritourism, which means ancillary uses to agritourism. And then it becomes a definition of what ancillary uses are. So town council was going to speak with other folks in their firm about who have more specialty in this, about, you know, refining that a little bit. So town council hasn't seen this letter specifically. We'll definitely get it to her tomorrow morning. But that question's already been posed to town council.
And they turned into, you need to go back to town and meet them. And clarify.
Right.
And let the townspeople weigh in. Do you want this?
Right. Yeah. Good point.
I think the bigger thing I take away is we're at about 50,000 feet. We're starting to land a plane here. So we've asked the Vandevogts to come with more details. I think we gotta, I mean, and I think as if we go ahead with something, I think just be very specific with what can't be and move forward. And then, you know what I mean? So I think we're, we're at the beginning, not, not the end.
And that's something I've asked specifically of the Vandevogts, of the applicant to say, you know, you, you asked for something very wide and then came here and said, what we actually want to do is much, much narrower. So now I'm working with them to craft the ask to be that narrower. So, so it's clear to everybody.
But it's also important because they're obviously not the first, only commercial farm.
Right.
There were going to be others that are going to have the same ideas.
They won't be the last.
Right.
Right.
Hundred percent.
Great. All right. Thank, thank you for that.
I know. Sorry.
Yes.
Last point. The, the guidance that I've gotten from, from town council is consistency is important from the board. So reasonable regulation from the board is, is your, is your role. But applying similar or exact principles to multiple applicants is, is what is important.
Right. I agree. Yeah. So we should consider how any decisions we make for Vandevogt would apply to future applications.
Yes.
Great. Thank you for that. All right. Any other, just on agenda, item three, citizen statements and petitions? And then I think that we can move to our hearing. So I would be looking for a motion.
I move to open a 6:35 PM public hearing to review cable television license with Verizon Incorporated.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. All right. And I believe, do we have someone here to?
Yes, William Solomon.
Wonderful. Can you join us at the table, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
I will. Thank you, Madam Chair. William Solomon, special cable counsel for the town. I think I can see some familiar face, one, one face, but, but maybe not. We did the license, the Verizon license five years ago and about six, six years ago, we did the Comcast cable license. Anyway, my name is William Solomon, cable attorney and worked as a town council for 30 years. And then we're here in Menden with the former town administrator and assistant staff. And a good process. We got a good license, the Verizon license. We're just about finalized and I thought I'd give a summary. And I made copies. I believe everyone has the summary. I made additional copies. Famously, I took one bunch of papers and left the other one at home. But let me just briefly discuss. Verizon wanted to keep a licensing because they knew it was important to sell not only telephone and even internet over phone lines, but to have high speed internet. And at that point to have video, because it's, it wasn't that long ago, in my, in my view, but you add it up. It was over 20 years ago they came in. And at that point, you know, there was not streaming video. So they, the way to provide video was cable television. And they waited for the triple play and they came in, they came in to mend it. And frankly, you know, the Menden's a great town. I, I have not been amended before during the holiday Christmas season. And it's, it's, it's all new experience driving through the town and seeing the, the great light displays. But it's a small town and there are a lot of small towns outside 495. In fact, most small towns did not have Verizon coming for files. And so Menden, through the work of the wards and the town, town staff, obviously Verizon coming forward. They, they came and the town is very fortunate to have a competitor in cable. But that said, after 20 years, in fact, at least six, seven years ago, their eyes went elsewhere. They're an excellent cable company for us. They do, do a very good job. But their eyes were moving on to, to the idea of streaming. Maybe everyone is a wireless customer. So what's been happening is the licenses have become short. Traditionally, cable licensing licenses were 10 years. The last license at that time and here in Menden was five years. And beginning in 2021, Verizon sought a three year unilateral out. That after three years, they could, they could move on from the license, but they had to give, have to give notice. We would have nine months. But importantly, in exchange for that, Verizon is providing five years of PEG, Public Educational Government Community Television. Five years of PEG capital in that three year license. And they'll all be paid within two years, 45 days. The first anniversary of the license and the second. So that, that there are benefits to the town. Now, the first licenses that were signed with the three year outs, Verizon is still renewing those licenses. Of renewing those licenses. So just because there is a three year out, they have a right to. They, they, it doesn't mean they will exercise that. One final point is the board would know, you know, he's driving. If you get a driver's license, doesn't mean you have to drive. You get a special permit in zoning, doesn't mean you have to build a structure or have a use and say it's a right to do it. And it'll, but, but a license in cable is viewed on the municipal side is, and is signed is an agreement. And so the cable companies make, is also making promises. So to Verizon's credit, they're not arguing, well, we can leave anytime. It's our right. They understand this is an agreement and therefore they've negotiated the terms of that three year out. So very briefly, in the major terms, license continues to have support for community television at 5% of gross revenues. That's the maximum allowed under the Cable Act. And we have a full definition of gross revenue. No arbitrary exclusions. It includes advertising, home shopping, equipment. It's both broad and narrow. So from our perspective, it's sometimes you have companies, and this is not Comcast and Verizon at this point. But they want to say, well, they're not streaming or we're doing that by, with fiber or digitally. And that's, that's not cable. And cable is not how the signal gets there. Cable is, does it have the broadcast channels? Four, five, seven. If it has those channels, a basic cable service, it's a cable service. We don't really care what box you use, you're a cable service. So importantly, we have an excellent, again, definition of, of gross revenue. Because that's what 5% is, is applied to.
So that includes then if somebody is doing YouTube TV. And people are doing YouTube TV here in town, as long as they're subscribing to that and they're getting broadcast packages. You count that as a cable package.
Yeah. And now there's going to be, there's going to be lots of, you know, fights and disagreements. But in theory, when they're selling, now if they're selling.
At Verizon selling.
Yeah. Yep. Broadcast channels and it has the PEG channels up, but the broadcast channels and they're selling, as you said, YouTube or something else. That's all part of, as we see it, and to this point, they do a cable, a cable package. Now, when they stream and they, they have no broadcast channel stations, they're just saying, well, you know, we're an intermediate. We're going to get Hulu and Disney and, you know, we have no, no broadcast channels. Well, that's, that, that could be different. And, but you know, these are, in a changing world, these are the disputes that could happen. And we want to try to be general and specific. Interestingly enough, as we, in the old days, when they, our definitions reflects this in, in, in part, you would be general. But then there'd be a question, well, what about advertising? What about this piece of equipment? So it's a including but not limited to. But more importantly now is the broad definition, which comes from the Cable Act. It's, it's revenue from both the licensee and importantly, an affiliate. So I can't just give somebody else and say, that's not our revenue. That's derived from the provision of cable service over the cable system. PEG capital, $28,000 paid, that's three, three payments, 45 days, one year, two years. We beforehand, there was a, there were, you'd have sometimes a, and I think we had a set amount and a percentage of gross revenue. The percentage of gross revenue doesn't really work when you're getting paid upfront three years out of five years. Didn't bring it with sir, but the importantly, we're going to have a high, let me just take a look at one provision on here. From the last license already did. So and I, I, I checked this at the time and I believe that the, the high definition channel for PEG was obtained from, from Verizon. I'll, I'll double check that in the license. I'll double check that. But if, if, if for some reason it was not obtained, then we will, we will get that, that because it wasn't requested, we'll get the license. But I, I addressed that in the license. So let me take a look. All right. So it may not have been based on the license, the draft, which I looked at. So the town will have the right to get a high definition PEG access channel. That will be in addition to the three channels, the standard definition, which they also cable cast in a higher digital format, SDI it's called. Will have a high definition channel with a letter to Verizon. So as soon as the board votes and signs the license, I'll, I'll have a draft license for you. A draft letter for you that you can send to Verizon to get that high definition channel. Importantly, because the studio is in the adjoining town, Verizon continues to have the obligation to bring that signal, the, the programming and signal back to the town of Menden. And that is continued as long as Verizon has, you know, has license over, in, over, over there. So that was important. And also you go live, obviously, from the, from the town, from the town hall. So with that said, apart from that, their, the license is very protective of the town. I don't think there's any better Verizon cable license in the Commonwealth. Verizon drafted a license, I drafted a license. And more recently, we discussed it and it was decided that I would take the both licenses and it just have the one license, which I'm finishing now and providing to, to the attorney for Verizon, attorney John Harrington. So I'll have that license, that draft license to him before the end of the year. I, based on the review, I don't think we have any differences that can't be bridged. It is just going over a few terms and driving them. And so with that, I would anticipate that at the beginning of next year, we'll have a license to provide finalized. We already have, let's say the two, two different drafts. And then we would put it on the agenda for the board to vote. I normally don't recommend it, but I think here, if we have a date sermon, I recommend continuing the hearing. So people have an opportunity to see the final license available at town hall. Your, your, your schedule in January, do you know yet?
January 15th.
Oh, fine. So, and let me step up. Yeah, that's right. I have it in there, in January already totally amended. So I, I'll probably be here. I used to, my office was in Stonem and now I'm in West, beginning of Western Mass. And I must say, because I know you're busy, that coming to Menden from, I knew Salem, near Allo, versus coming from Stonem. It's, it's, it's almost like I'm coming to a different town. Because it just, it's, it's such a different experience than how one, how one gets here. And it's a, I need to do it in the daytime to fully appreciate all the beauty of the town. So that said, my goal and plan would be to be here. Where you'll have the license at least a week before, so you can put it into your agenda. I have summary I provided before. I'll update that summary. So I think on January 15th, the board will be in a position to vote. I'll make my recommendation. I think it's, it's an excellent license. And then, you know, you'll, you'll have that license for five years with some right to get out, but continued good funding. And in, in a world where never has community television or PEG access been more important, or never has it been understood to be more important because of what it did during COVID and how the world became hybrid to some extent afterwards. So it's, it's a good time to expand that funding as, as the town goes forward. You have to answer any questions that may be here for the public.
Did you have a question?
I think so.
Okay. All right. So I think we'll look forward to the, the updated summary. And then, so I guess we'll invite you back for the, for January.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yep. And if you continue the hearing, then now to that dates of the public.
I think that, that sounds like what we'll do. So we need a motion to continue.
Yes. So I need to continue the 6:35, our 6:35 PM public hearing to review the renewed local cable licenses with Verizon Incorporated through January 15th, 2025.
That can, it may be a good time, sir.
6:35 as well?
I'll be great.
Thank you.
Excellent. Then there was, second, okay. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
That's all right. Thanks. Good seeing you.
Vandevogt is at 6:35?
Ah.
Okay.
We.
Motion was better.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Right.
Yes, exactly. 6:31 or 6:33. So we can do this first and be, yes.
Yeah. So I move to amend the previous motion. The time to be 6:31. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, opposed? Thank you. Thank you for announcing that. Yeah, because definitely one goes, one needs to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you. One of those can take longer.
Yes. That is the expectation. All right. So that was item two. We already did item three. So we'll move on to item four, meeting minutes for approval. So in your packets, there were the November 20th, 2020 minutes. So I would be looking for a motion.
I move to approve November 20, 2024 minutes.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. And then meeting minutes for circulation. I don't think I saw those in the packet. Did I?
I didn't see.
So yeah, if you could, if you could send those when you have a chance. I know, right, the, the, the 18th was our very quick meeting. I think we basically just voted on some special town meeting articles. Think, yeah, the December 4th one might be longer. Those minutes might be longer. Yeah. Great. Okay. So then, yes. Okay. Oh, thank you. Okay. So item four, then on the, sorry, I printed up the, the agenda from the packet. So the amended agenda, item number four is appointments. So we have two appointments. And actually, if we could invite our chief. Chief of Menden.
Right. So the last.
Thank you.
Should be Peters and Kyle's. Could be in last minute. Notice the agenda. The next meeting was a little further off than initially anticipated.
Yes.
So I've been, as you know, the department's been somewhat growing. Before last year, we've been building as we go. We have added nine full people. We actually have two more applicants that I'm putting through the process right now. With that, we want to kind of divide up the responsibilities a little bit more. And we want to bring back the deputy chiefs position, which was occupied by me up until I took the career. We had two people apply for it, both very well qualified. They reported to the department last January, I believe. Last week, we went through, had two fire chiefs in to do an assessment. It was a, and they lasted over an hour just to interview. So it was pretty thorough. They came out, when I went back in to talk to the chiefs, they were happy that I had the problem that I have, that I had to very qualified people for the position. Peter scored a 97 average out of the 100 points. And Kyle was a 92 and 5. So it's a good problem to have. My recommendation would be to move Peter into the deputy chiefs position. He's currently a captain within the department. And he's been basically handling the workload of a deputy chief. So it's putting him in the position where he's doing the work. He's done wonders reforming our training, just building. He's administrative, administratively, he's very good. His paperwork is, my admin is very happy with the amount of paperwork that he passes every training. So, and that's a big step to document everything that we do for ISO purposes down the road. So the first one, I can start with that. Recommend that the board appoint Peter Ostrowski Jr. to the on-call deputy chiefs position.
And this is the position, if I can ask a question.
Yes.
Madam Chair. So this is a position that has, was previously filled in previous fiscal years and has not been filled since you took the career.
That is, yeah. And there's a very minimal financial impact, I think, just hardly increases a dollar. He basically works trainings, so he doesn't really come in on call very much. But he does a lot of during the day stuff and comes back for training. So it's not a huge impact financially.
But I think more importantly, thematically, we've talked about succession planning. So I think this is actually an act, an action that actually, you know, puts some, some, some work behind the words. And probably something we will be looking at more broadly, just because we've, we felt the impact of not having succession planning in place.
Yes.
A, or effective succession planning. And I think this is actually the right step. Regardless, the, the financials are good.
Yeah.
But I just think that the more you grow, whether, you know, as a municipality, we're going to need more, you know, structure like this.
I don't believe there is a firearm anywhere near us that does not have a deputy chief. So it's, it's an important position. It's the number two in the department. And if I'm away, he acts as the chief of the department. Yep. I've known Peter for a very long time. Crossed him in every action that he does. He's very competent firefighter. Great person.
Can I ask how this affects? Because I have no idea how, what it's like to be a firefighter. How does this affect their other jobs? Like, are we in competition? Or are we in collaboration with?
Kind of collaboration because he works 24 hour shifts right now. It's actually, I think it's official. But he's being promoted to captain in Concord. So he's still going to be working his 24 hour shift. So he works 48 hours a week, the rest of the time. He's available to come in, do some administrative stuff for us and trainings twice a month. It helps him grow for his full-time job and helps us as well with the amount of experience. And this is, this is a family affair for him, right? That is, yes. That's true. His father was the, he's retired fire marshal for the state. Before that, he was, he was the fire chief in Oxford. Peter actually started as a high school intern. His career at Oxford when he was a high school intern. I've actually been with him on his very first fire. So we've been traveling along his journey together. So it's been great seeing him grow where he is now.
Are there questions? So I think we, I would be looking for a motion. I don't think we have one directed specifically, but I think we just need a dollar. The motion.
Is it listed in the contract? They don't have a contract.
Yeah, I'll call them.
Okay. So we don't need that. Okay. Excellent.
So then I would move to appoint Peter J. Ostrowski Jr. to the position of deputy on-call deputy. On-call deputy fire chief for the amended fire department.
Discussion? All right, all in favor? Great, great, thank you, so. Congratulations to Peter on this. Yes, so that is, that's fantastic, so thank you for bringing this to us, and that that then makes the next step. More possible.
Yes, so Kyle has been, is his passion for the fire service is very active. Very contagious passion, everyone that's around him gets more motivated for the fire service, he's a student of the game. He's a career lieutenant in Ashland, he's started as an explorer in Ashland and has gone through the process there. He's always learning, and he's been a shining star in the short time that we've had him. And I thought it was a great opportunity to grab onto his leadership capabilities. Put him in a leadership position in the department. My vision for the captain's position, now that we have the deputy as well, would be to basically be the point person for the call department. Our call department's growing, we need to have that, we don't have a officer on the call. So it's all firefighters right now, putting a captain as that lead, I think will help the organization with that.
Let's see, backfilling.
Peter, yeah, it's filling in, Peter's moving up from captain to deputy, and Kyle would move into.
So you're adding more responsibilities onto that position.
That's correct, yeah.
Any other questions?
I guess we're very happy that he completed his executive leadership recently from Columbia. Southern University, yeah, in the spring twenty twenty six, yeah, like somebody going to the academic, so that's great for you.
Right, so then I would be looking for a motion, I guess that, well, same question is for this one, is there?
Make a motion to promote firefighter count a single one, or single. Uh, to on-call captain.
Second.
Discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
So congratulations to.
Pass it on to them.
Yes, so.
Would you like to invite both of them to a meeting in the future?
Yes, so my plan is maybe one of the next meetings that bring everyone that we put on the last year. Because Monday will be my one-year anniversary as the chief, so I want to bring everyone in and introduce you all to the recruits that we have put on, it's been. It's been good, it's been a good year so far, I tell them to come on Friday night. They they all have been invited. I don't know how many will attend, but they have all received the invitation.
Will you be there?
I unfortunately will not be. Flying taxi for all the sports that. Thank you very much.
Look at the numbers. All right, so then, so we did item five, the meeting minutes for approval, we already did that, we did. Item six, the meeting minutes for circulation, which now. Right, so we will be looking for those at some point when you have a chance, Katie, you can pass those along. And then now we're on to item seven, the twenty twenty five license renewals, and this is. Quite a large agenda item, because we have quite a long list of renewals. Jeremy, do you have?
Yeah, so I'll say, I'll say a few things here, so the initial agenda has the motions. Broken down by license type, so there's essentially two ways to do it, there's some businesses that have multiple licenses. Uh, but it's more so common that there is a license that has multiple, a license type that has multiple businesses. So we split the motions down by license type, so based upon the motions that Katie sent around, we've been looking for motions right in that sense. Some contacts in these, these are various types of license, the common V I C. License is about, you know, selling various food, drinks and wares. We have some entertainment licenses, some various vehicle. Vehicle licenses and some combinations, some entities that have multiple licenses. I spoke with the fire chief earlier today, and they have done their rounds either. Quite recently or or within within the past few months, and have signed off on all of their. Permitting implications here, so. Uh, we've had multiple departments go through these, we've kind of checked off all the boxes, Katie has driven around town and hand-delivered licenses to folks who are unresponsive. In the mail, and then she, I think she sat with a couple of businesses within the last few weeks, as they can, filled out the license applications. Um, so we've done, we've done a lot of work to try to get everybody on here.
Right, as usual, we pass the ones you have and just let the rest of them go. From around, so thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you very much, did you get everyone?
Yes.
Really?
I was gonna say Subway was the last one that we needed, right?
That's amazing.
Great.
Yeah, so she sat at New England State Agency Wood yesterday as they filled it out in my hand.
Okay, all right, thank you, Katie.
Yeah. So, yeah, she she's done a great job with the last month to make sure all these came in. Um, and so.
But yeah, very complicated, I saw the physical stack that Katie had.
Oh, yeah.
And you've all seen the, right, the.
You all have a lot assigned.
The, yeah, there was the, yeah, hundred and sixty one page P D F.
Um, so anyway, the the motions that are, that were in the initial agenda that went around is what we would likely.
Okay.
I missed a quick question on the motion, you you touched on it, where the fire chief has already done his inspection, so. Last, in our last public hearing, we talked about, you know, pending completion routing slip, are we saying the routing slip are all, all fire? Everything's been checked off, so there is no pending.
Correct, okay. We, you are, those have, those have happened.
Yeah, so we don't need to include it, that language we can ignore, right?
And is that, is that correct, yeah?
And just, yeah, note that I think the draft motion might have twenty twenty four, so just whoever makes any motions, just make sure that you. Update that the year to twenty twenty one. No. She did an amazing job. And she just put that there to make sure that we were paying attention, so. Yeah, so, right, so I think. Anymore before we start in on this motion?
It's a long motion, Eric.
Okay, okay, so, uh, but we'll do the emotion for each set? Or does it make sense to do the long, one long motion?
Well, so I want to abstain from the farm license, so if we could separate that one out.
Okay, okay, all right, that's, that is a good point, okay, so any other ones that anyone might have any potential conflict of interest?
I will say these are renewals, so the farm, the Vanderbrock license is renewing the farm's winery license, not, it's not. So on what the public hearing was.
Yes.
Just want to make that, I know you.
Okay, so, so we, whoever reads the motion can leave that one out, and we can do that one separately.
We can read a motion once and then read off all the sections and licenses under those sections and have one vote, or two votes. Okay.
All right, and then my only other question is, it's the motion as written says pending complete application and payment, is that also already done? All right, so I move to approve the following twenty twenty five annual license renewals. Restaurant all alcohol common victular entertainment, Miss Men and Diner fourteen Uxbridge Road, building number sixteen. G V Men and Management Grandview, six Knitmuck Drive, Willbrook Restaurant LLC does business as Willbrook Restaurant, sixteen Hastings Street. Q and T Restaurant LLC does business as Alicante Mediterranean Row Restaurant and Lounge, eighty four Uxbridge Road. N L C K Incorporated does business as Wolves Restaurant, seventy five Cape Road. Haveco Two does business as Greenhouse Wood Fire Club, three Cape Road. Steak House Incorporated. General on on-premise all alcohol common victular license, Miss Men and Diner two twenty Uxbridge Road. General on-premise all alcohol adult entertainment license, Showtime Entertainment LLC forty nine Milford Street. Package Store All Alcohol Common Victular. L A B H Incorporated does business as Men and Wine and Spirits, thirty two Hastings Street. Trini Shang Corp does business as Liquor World, one A Cape Road. Restaurant Wine and Malt Regular Common Victular, A T L K LLC does business as Deluxe Pizza, thirty two Hastings Street. Restaurant All Alcohol Common Victular Automatic Amusements Entertainment, Roy Ventures Corporation does business as the Endzone Sports Club. The Outer Limits, thirty nine Milford Street. Southwick Wild Animal Farm does business as Southwick Zoo, Galafords, nine Southwick Street. General on-premises wine and malt regular common victular movie entertainment, jukebox. The Fat Brothers LLC does business as the Men and Twin Drive in thirty five Milford Street. Uh, Common Victular A N Z Golden Corporation does its business as D B Mart number three, one Milford Street. Chashal Enterprises Incorporated does business as Sunny Farms, one B Cape Road. C L Pizza Incorporated does business as known as Pizza Corporation, one B Cape Road. Gold Medalist LLC does business as Gascow Fuels, twenty five Cape Road. B and E Donut Business has Duncan Donuts, four Uxbridge Road. Imperial Gas LLC, eight Uxbridge Road. Muffin House Cafe, thirty two Hastings Street, the Hideaway Pizza, La Platte Incorporated, ninety five Uxbridge Road. Clough School, ten North Ave, Miskin Hill School, one forty eight North Ave. Class one license, East Acre Recreational Vehicles, ten Cape Road. Imperial Chrysler Dodge Jeep, ten Uxbridge Road. Imperial Ford, eight Uxbridge Road, Bob's Marine, nineteen Uxbridge Road. Me and Automobiles Incorporated does business as Imperial Chevrolet, twenty Uxbridge Road. Imperial Chrysler Dodge Jeep does business as Imperial Sprinter, twenty Uxbridge Road. And class two license, Jamzak LLC does business as Forefront Auto, twenty eight Hastings Street. Certified Sales, nineteen Uxbridge Road. Copart of Connecticut, eighty two Cape Road, Richie's Drive Line, one Kingsley Lane. Supple Auto Sales, twenty Cape Road, Veluso Precision Auto LLC, ninety three Blackstone Street. J and G Motors LLC, sixty five Providence Street, Imperial Toy Store LLC, forty four Uxbridge Road. Native Automotive LLC, sixty four Milford Street.
Second.
Discussion?
Nice job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, and then I believe we actually have.
One more motion to think.
Actually, uh, two more, because Subway, I think, did not make it into that updated list, even though you you tracked them down, so. We'll do, we can do that one separately.
Subway at thirty two Hastings Streets.
Restaurant?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
All right, I move to approve the following twenty twenty four annual license renewals.
Twenty twenty five.
Sorry, twenty twenty five. I messed it up. All right, restaurant, common victular entertainment, Subway Incorporated at.
I think not entertainment.
Not entertainment, just a restaurant, common.
Okay, restaurant, common Vic.
Thirty two Hastings.
Thirty two Hastings Street. Send one more.
Well, second.
Right, because we need to have that one separate, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, discussion, yeah. All right, all in favor? Great, so that was Subway.
Here's me redeeming myself. All right, I move to approve the following twenty twenty five annual license renewals. Farmer Winery pouring permit wines only common victular, Susan Vanderbrock does business as Vanderbrock Farm Winery, twenty five Level Street.
Second.
Uh, discussion? And I believe there is going to be an extension, so all in favor?
Aye, abstain.
Okay, opposed? All right, so, thank you, so that passes, so. Thank you, Brendan, for reading that, those very long moments, and thank you, Katie, for all that groundwork.
Katie will be able to edit that agenda live.
Exactly, yes.
Live update.
Right.
Instead of having that hard PDF that changes, so that'll be awesome.
Great, fantastic, all right, so. Took so long, Mike.
Good to see all that business amended.
Yes, right, so that was seven, all right. So we are on to item eight, the surplus highway nineteen sixty eight Kaiser Jeep ambulance. Jeremy, do you want to start us off? I know Mike Morley, you know a lot about this as well.
So Mike, Mike can give probably a little more detail, but this is a shaggy dog story, as I say, so nineteen sixty eight Kaiser Jeep ambulance. Ended up after a series of events with the highway department, so it is. An ambulance that was, it was, it was a vehicle that was used in the ambulance by by the army, was surplus. And ended up through means which are not entirely clear to anybody with the Men and Highway Department. Uh, the highway department and the fire department were attempting to get a title. Through various means, through the registry, we don't have a VIN, we don't have an odometer, we don't have a chain of title, we don't have any of that, so. Um, I asked John to give it to Katie, and over the course of a week or so, Katie worked with the distant. Through Jake Ockham class's office, through contacts that Mike Morley had made, through the disposition authority. Through the Department of Defense, I believe it was, and we were able to get a certification for an application of a title. That we got today and is in the mail now, and we will be able to then take that and apply to the R M V for a title. Kind of funny, they asked us for an odometer reading, which I then asked Highway Surveyor John W for, and he sent me a picture of the dash, which is just a bunch of wires coming through, and it's just nothing.
Yes, it's like, it's if you go to the highway department and look towards the recycling, it's in the way backfield, kind of like sticking out of the woods there.
So we are, we are able to to use this, which which is in the mail today, we have a digital copy of it, to then apply to the registry to get a title. Um, which we then can surplus this item, there is a kind of hobbyist group. Um, or hobbyist groups that are interested in Kaiser ambulances, that kind of turn them either back into their. National state, so to speak, of of army ambulances, folks use them as record, as RVs, or, or any, any sorts of things, so there's. There's a whole, there's a whole community that's interested in these sorts of things, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we can surplus this item, get it off. Get it off our property and into the hands of somebody who can, you know, breathe new life into it, and then, you know, get a little bit of money in the process. But it's been, it's been a long road to get here, it's, yeah, I I know, I know Mike Morley's been been interested in it, John W's been working on it, and Katie's been working on it recently. Um, so it's, it's been a team effort to get us, get us.
Thought the commentary from the government was interesting.
That was very interesting.
I I was surprised how much information they provided.
Yeah.
But then in the end, we're like, oh, we don't really.
Is there any need to wait for the title before surplusing it?
So us surplusing it just means it it gives the department, it gives. Um, so just like the, so if folks, if you remember, you surplused the street sweeper at our last meeting, so I'll just use this agenda. About that, surplus streets, we grabbed the last item at the last meeting, and I had an all-staff meeting earlier today. And the town clerk said, why was I stuck behind a street sweeper today? Um, and it was because the highway department was bringing it down from Minman Hill to the Highway Barn, because our new street sweeper is being delivered tomorrow.
Wow, that's way faster than twenty weeks.
So initially, the highway department had said it would be about a year, and then we talked at the four-time meeting, so we'll get it in March. And then he got a call earlier this week, said we have one available for you this week. So they brought down the old street sweeper, it's down to the Highway Barn, and will be surplus to the the vendor to take off our purchase price. Um, so, um, we're below, our purchase price will be below three hundred thousand dollars, and then we have to outfit it with. Lights, decals, radios, and all those sorts of things, so the, the, you know, the all-in cost will go up. But it will be less than originally anticipated, and we got it earlier than originally anticipated.
Nice.
So.
That's great.
Got to under promise.
Wondering why the speech was sitting in the parking lot.
Yeah.
There it is, so the new street sweeper should be in our possession tomorrow, and last one be surplus. Up and down, so nineteen sixty eight ambulance, surplus is now, and then we'll go through, we'll go through the municipal. Uh, website, which is kind of how we auction stuff off, but we'll go through, you know. Reach out specifically to to groups and promote it and say, here's, you know, we have this.
Pipe it up.
There is, there is someone in town who has. Constantly asked about it. Important that. That it's a person being proven.
Yes, send, send me their information, I'll make sure they get it.
I'm sure you have it. That's right. That actually started its. Or it it was transferred here in the nineteen seventies, so it's been in town. So it's been in town.
Wow. Yeah, so it's ready for a new, new stage in its history, maybe in a different town. All right, any, anything to add on this one? So do we need, we need to vote on that surplus?
I would move to approve the nineteen sixty-eight Kaiser Jeep ambulance as a surplus item.
Second?
Uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, great. So you'll keep us posted as, as we get, uh, updates on that story? Okay, all right, so. Then we're on to, uh, item nine, the update on the general bylaw review committee, and I believe this, this.
Yeah, I'll be quick, um, the first meeting was the other night, uh, went really well. Um, one of the outputs from that meeting, uh, their meeting right now, actually, uh, was to, yeah. Um, was, uh, they came up with a form process for not just people inside the town, but outside the town. To submit their ideas, uh, to commit, they already got a bunch of form submissions. Um, and so they're gonna work through those kind of items, and they're gonna start with some of the priority items. Like fixing the timing wording on the bylaw that we just changed. Uh, so some things like that, um, and they got a good list, and they got some really great people with some good heads on their shoulders. So it should be, it should have some good output.
And I, I talked to the town council as well about where town council wants to be inserted in the process, to make sure we're not, uh, either doing a bunch of work. On a committee level that then gets undone legally, but also make sure we're not kind of overextending, you know, legal budgets. So she's, town council's gonna be inserted kind of towards the end, once, once we have the idea and know where we want to go, to kind of refine that towards, towards the end.
One of the, one of the members is, is, uh, working towards their, uh, bar, so, and has recently graduated from law school. So there'll be a lot of, and her law energy in that room.
Right, and I, and I believe our town moderator is.
Right.
Very, very intimate, intimately acquainted with the bylaws, so it'll be good to.
Yeah, it'll be really nice to have an outside opinion for the board.
Yeah, completely agree.
Yeah, and I think, right, I think that all of those, uh, all of those people who we recently appointed will contribute a lot there. I think there's a, a lot of good energy in that group, so, um, and I believe there's still, right, still vacancies.
Three vacancies for anybody who's listening and wants to go debate, uh, town bylaws.
It should be like very, yeah, very lively and, uh, potentially have some, you know, big impact.
Big impact, I think, yeah.
Yeah. So, great, thank you for that update, Jason. All right, anything to add on that point, anyone? All right, so let's move on to the old salt box road update. So Jeremy, I believe there's some update in our update.
Yeah, there's, there is, I know, so, um.
His real name is Pepper.
So this is just a, a description of the property. So we're talking essentially about an acre of land, point nine nine acres of land, uh, this was called an eighty-one X, it was filed with the registry. Um, that defines the, the parameters of the land, so from here at the, the Hope Dale line down here, and then it narrows down this way. So, uh, received word from council, um, earlier this week, and then the final deed earlier today, um, that this is ready. To be donated and transferred to the town. So, um, uh, and Mazars is working on getting original signatures from the three donors. Um, and then the, so there are serial actions that need to happen, uh, the donors sign it first. Um, and then the, the board and the conservation commission kind of happen one or the other, because it's being donated as conservation land. So, um, conservation commission will accept it as conservation land, and the board will vote to, to ratify, um, that acceptance. Um, and this, so this does not need to go to town meeting. So the, um, uh, um, Concom is right now scheduled to meet on December twenty-sixth. Uh, I don't know if they're going to uphold, keep that meeting scheduled out, but that's, that's what's scheduled right now. And so if, if that's the case, this will be on their December twenty-sixth agenda, if not, it will be in the following week, if they were scheduled. Um, so right now, um, uh, the motion I'd be looking for is to, um, accept the donation, um, of the land. As described, um, in the plan presented, pending the signatures of the donors and the affirmative vote of the conservation commission.
So moved.
Okay, uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for, yeah.
Seems like it was very easy, I really appreciate.
It's all about respect.
Yeah, yeah. Quite, quite the saga.
Yeah, it does, it's, it's, that's like one of those ones you write down for a white paper for a conference, right?
Yeah, about, right, lessons learned.
Yeah.
Great, that is, that's wonderful news, and so we look forward to, I guess, being able to sign off on those.
Yeah, so I, I've been.
foreseeable future.
This morning, uh, talked with, talked with Anne Mazars, who's facilitating the, the signatures of the donors, um, and with Isabella Gumbet, Gumbel. Sorry, Isabella, our conservation agent, I miss my last name all the time, um, who will get on the conservation agenda moving forward.
It's, all right, so then next up is the ARPA update, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you, um, so, uh, as you're all aware, uh, we are under an obligation to obligate all of our ARPA funds. Um, by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, uh, the town had roughly two point, two point one million dollars in ARPA funds. I don't, I don't have it in front of me or no.
One point.
One point.
Eight, yeah.
One point.
One point eight. Um, thank you, um, one point eight million in ARPA funds, um, spent on a variety of one-time capital. So I commend this board and previous ones for, um, it not being sucked up in operational costs and service costs. That it was, was investments that otherwise would have needed an otherwise one-time infusion. Um, and I think the application of ARPA funds in the town, uh, well prior to my arrival was, um, kind of their intended use. Uh, I think the town really benefited from that. Chief Bagman can attest to that. So, uh, as it stands right now, um, there is twenty-three thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents of unallocated ARPA funds. Um, I have two requests tonight to allocate to previous needs, um, which leaves us with twelve thousand and change in unallocated. Uh, but let me go through the previous needs first. Um, so, uh, previously, we had done a pavement management study with Beta and Aaron, um, which. Kind of needs a refresh and an upkeep, um, and Beta, uh, sent us a proposal, a five thousand dollar proposal. Um, to refresh with our current data, with our current investments, with what we've been doing, um, and refresh the study and give us something going forward.
We, we expected to have to refresh that then in the three-year period, why are we accelerating?
We've accelerated what we've done, and I think.
We really haven't. We've done one year's worth of paving based on that first, I'm just, because we, we planned, we talked about doing it every five years, I think. But at their, at their recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what the.
I, 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 I'm, I'm for this, but, uh, like a little.
It's a good question.
Right.
I'd be, yeah, curious what data they're updating, because five thousand dollars seems too cheap to do the whole time.
And if, and if they update the data, they need to give us the data, Jeremy. You, you know, I mean, they ignored the request as far as I can tell, for the data.
So the, from the Highway Surveyors, can I mention that to use and update our data, Beta, um, we need a maintenance contract. That being said, they've sent a proposal for a maintenance contract at five thousand dollars. Um, I will say the Highway Surveyor said, thinks it's unconscionable that they have our data and we can't do anything with it. So it's an.
Accent.
Accenture. Yeah, a, a maintenance contract to, to the data that they.
I just, I'm just curious, what are they gonna maintain?
I, I think it's because, what I've talked to John about, it's because we don't have, like, we don't own visual. The software to visualize the data points, so in order to do, like, in order to not just get a big data dump, that we're not gonna do anything. They.
All right, all right, I'll argue that point.
Well, but that we're not gonna be able to visualize and report on it the same way, because John's not an IT person. Um, like, in order to use their interface and, and have access to it and sort of filter our data using their software. I think that's what we have to pay.
And the original contract, as it was presented to, not the contract, but the demo, was that we had the ability to maintain data. Because we're gonna be making changes throughout the life of the contract. For five thousand dollars, sounds like they're just gonna maintain data, which we don't actually have access to, so we can see it through their visualization. Which is fine, but I just, I think we really want to get clarity, because it seems like we, we, we should be able to edit the data today. As my understanding. Right.
User-friendly, so the Highway Surveyor could do that.
Yeah, so there's other software systems that he would like to get into, I think, that do this, there's other systems that already do this in our system, I don't really know. So all GIS data.
Well, yeah, I mean, I keep hearing about all these software packages, let, let's focus on this one and make sure we're getting what we're, we paid for, we expected to get. Make sure we're using it to its, to what we should be able to use it to, that makes sense?
I mean, I. Yeah, I don't know any of those answers, so.
No, no, but I. No, no, I just, I, I believe, believe maintenance, but I think updating data. Yeah, seemed to be something that.
Yeah, I'd like to know what that is, yeah, yeah.
Because.
And I, I don't have the original.
I thought, we probably have it. I have the original.
Do you know, she, or when it, when was it?
Um, twenty, uh, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, or June twenty-four. It's a one-time period, it's an annual maintenance contract.
It's an annual maintenance.
So they do have a slide in their slide deck saying system maintenance deployment, but I think we need to look at the contract. But I think regardless of contract, I'm, I'm guessing that their pack, their software limits access. So, I mean, we can argue a point, it turns out that.
They have us over.
Right, but the question is, do we want to get into a perpetual maintenance agreement of five thousand dollars a year?
And I mean, well.
If we want to use their data, we probably have to.
I mean, I, I don't know that it needs to be perpetual, right, I mean. Well, in some extent, it's for a year, and then, I guess, what is the contract for? Is it for one year?
Yeah.
And then we can evaluate whether it's worth it to.
That's, that's fine, but I just.
Yeah, I mean.
It seems to be.
Maybe it could be perpetual, right, if it turns out that it's useful, and this is the only way that we can actually make use of the data.
See, my point would be, why would we get an annual maintenance contract after one year worth of work where we, we paved, you know, we, we did some good work, right? But we, it's very, it, it's a small number of roads that we did. Would this be the right year to pay for maintenance? What has changed significantly that we, you know what I mean? If we, we know which roads we touched, the visualization we currently have from the first go-around of them scanning the town.
Do we have that?
We should, because they took pictures of everything, so whatever they did then, we have access to. Portal, if we don't pay the maintenance fee, that's my.
I think that's the restriction, yeah.
I think that's probably what will happen.
Right, I think we.
Like a payroll.
Yeah.
Right, there was like the big, like, spreadsheet almost, but I don't know that we have access to.
And I don't think that's the data, yeah.
Right, I mean, I think that's what we, right, so I, I think, well, I don't think we currently have access to the more interactive database. I think we just have the static output that they presented.
John is accessing.
He does?
He should, yeah. Cause I, I think, all right.
But it's the five thousand bucks what we need to pay to have the continued.
Right.
Yes.
Right, and it's more of a lesson learned on assessing our, our, our packages, and what's in and what's out, and things like that thing.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have, I don't have the contract, um.
I'm okay with going ahead and authorizing five thousand dollars from ARPA to, to continue this, but I think we really, let's investigate what we have. What we've asked, how it works.
Next year, if this is.
Cause when we first did it, we said, well, we're gonna redo the scanning and everything in a three-year, when, when they were presenting to us, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, because it made sense, but the, the, the lack of access in the.
The idea was, we were gonna have access to everything they give for a three-year period, now it sounds like we're not. It sounds like they charged us five thousand a year in years two and three, to get access to it, and to not do anything.
And, and the other, right, and the other thing is, we've got, we had an assessment, we should have a three-year plan out of the assessment we started against. There's no reason why we should deviate necessarily from the plan that should be in place, because it was based on that, that point in time, unless, you know. We have a natural.
Great ask.
Right, so the question is, what is, how, what's the use of the online portal that we're now paying five thousand dollars?
I think because there's additional data in there that might be useful beyond the.
Might be, but I, I.
I don't, I'm guessing.
I know, but I put it this way, are, are we using it? How would we use it?
Yeah.
Should we pay for that use if we're not gonna use it? That, that's really one of.
It's great.
We, you're right, like, I.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just think, yeah, it would be useful to follow up on this in coming months, I mean, because we don't want it, like, a year to pass, and then to be in this big position.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I think so, you need to do it now.
So it more, how can we use it, not, not whether we do it or don't, there's value to it, because I know there's value to it. Let's make sure. Yeah, no, 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 when we saw the original time, this was a good, it's, it's good data. I think our ability to use the data has been hamstrung, because they didn't give us the data.
So what John, what John said at the end of this too, is like, um, and we can have a discussion on increasing our budget in FY twenty-six to cover this cost going forward. So I think that's the, that's the inflection point, to say, you know, we invest five thousand dollars through ARPA. Was that a, how useful was that?
That's a really good.
Should we want, do we want that to be part of our operating?
What is the link that were for this maintenance budget?
Year, things, five thousand.
Well, I hear FY twenty-six, I'm sitting here going, I'm paying five thousand dollars for six months.
So, he, I'm, I tried to give, Department Heads a lot of benefit of the doubt, I talk about kind of fiscal year applications.
Yeah.
We'd be paying for a, an annual license when we sign the contract, so it would effectually be calendar year twenty-five. So for FY twenty-six, what he means is, you know, that would then come into play by January twenty-six, so we'd pay for a twelve-month license.
Yeah. I know, it's not in the rears.
I would prefer to have licenses line up till our July first, but like, the one doesn't work on July first.
Yeah.
All the time, and our funding doesn't work till July first.
Well, can, should we suggest a six-month, to, to we align it now, say, we'd like to do twenty-five hundred and revisit this as our normal budget?
Well, let's do the, let's do the five thousand.
Do we, I, do we think, so, our chapter ninety funding doesn't become available until July, our additional chapter ninety funding doesn't become available till July one. And I think a bulk of our, um, paving program in calendar year twenty-five is going to happen at the back end of the calendar year. So in fiscal twenty-six, so I think to kind of get the, the most out of, um, access to this data. Having a twelve-month from now rather than a six-month from now.
Yes.
I think, I think that's, I think you're a good question, so I'm not trying to ask.
Oh, no, I, you, you know, I will always ask the question.
Right.
Happy asking questions, so. Yeah, and I know the conversation has moved on a little bit, but, I mean, my recollection was that their web interface was built as a comprehensive paving management interface. Where we could update what we've done, and it updated its recommendations, so that's what we should.
They were also talking, that was my second meeting, by the way, after.
Okay.
But, um, I remember them also talking about, like, adding culverts, adding addition.
Yeah.
And stuff, stuff, free, fine, free that needed to be taken down, like, they wanna sell the rest of the package of data collection, so. Or this gets us into that.
Right, so we have access to this portal, you know, we should be trying to get our money's worth.
Right, yeah, so I mean, I, yeah, what, what I'd love to do is have follow-up on this in a few months, maybe.
As, as part of fiscal twenty-six budget.
Right, yeah, so that, that would be great.
Do you have recollections to what the dollar value of the initial contract was?
Did you find it?
I, I didn't find it yet, I'd have to open up the, uh, the packing information for that meeting.
I'll, I'll try to find it too, and I, I should have done it in advance.
But, I mean, I'll make a motion to allocate five thousand dollars from ARPA funds to the, uh. Pay for the maintenance contract associated with the, the pavement study. Vendor, we.
Why can't we see that?
Second.
She's working on it right now.
My memo to the accountants will condense that.
Say waiting points, any, uh, further discussion? All right, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great, thank you, um, so then, what's that?
Two more, two more, two more, um, ARPA motions, um, so that leaves us with eighteen thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. So when we, um, uh, the board allocated seven thousand dollars to, um, the council on aging for equipment maintenance. Largely relative to the stairlift. Um, this is also where I say I try to give Department Heads benefit of the doubt on things where they don't typically do as part of their day-to-day maintenance. So, um, what COA, I'm not sure if it was the board or the director, had said. This is the lift we have, and they looked and said, this is how much to get a replacement of this lift. What they really need is not the same lift, but a lift that is a curved chair that goes. Out of, out of the stairwell and folds up, so you can. It's a narrow stairwell. So they don't need, so they could do a like for like, but a like for like is not the best solution for them. Um, so rather than a seven thousand dollar lift, we went and got three quotes, um, and there is a twelve thousand six hundred dollar lift. From Massachusetts Company, actually, um, that then comes down, like I said, folds around the corner and folds up. And the original quote we got did not include disposal of the in place lift, um, which is substantial. It's over a thousand dollars to dismantle and dispose of the current stuff. So, um, the quotes that we had, and the cheapest quote we had is for twelve thousand six hundred dollars. To, um, install, um, the lift that is needed and then dispose of the current lifted place. Um, the board has previously allocated seven thousand dollars, so I'd be looking for, or I would ask the board to make a motion. Um, for an additional allocation of five thousand six hundred dollars for council on aging.
So moved.
Uh, any further discussion?
Do they need any more money for like lights or anything? Like, you know, fancy on there, like, uh, yeah, that's, I would want to make sure they're getting exactly. This is the last chance, like, exactly what they need.
So what, um, what I've said to senior center director, the council agent director is that, um. To Amy, um, is that, uh, we've, um, town meeting allocated an additional thirty five thousand dollars in building equipment maintenance. Um, and to be really, um, you know, an advocate for her short term immediate needs. So, uh, we're using that, so there's already thirty thousand dollars in that bucket and town meeting put another, maybe five thousand dollars. So like, um, there's a garage door that needs replacement at highway, we're using it there. Um, propane heating in, in, um, the fire department that we're using there. Um, so I said to Amy, we need, um, her security system that she wants at the, at the senior center, you know, this, this money's available, like. Um, you know, for a few thousand dollars, which was previously not budgeted within the senior center, we have, we have this, this budget to, to invest in those sorts of things. So, um, I've, I've been trying to instill kind of advocacy in Department Heads because, um, their skills in doing that are unequal across departments. Um, and so I think, I think that message has been delivered to.
Okay, yeah, cause Mike says it a lot, eh, but like, we just wanna, we don't wanna hear it loud. I'm used to the crisis man, we don't wanna hear it last minute because it's harder to, to make those decisions. We can hear about it before budget season, we can talk about these things early.
So you tapping the building maintenance budget? Have a line item right now for things? Would you prefer to allocate any remaining ARPA to some of those things?
So after this vote, there is twelve thousand five hundred sixty eight dollars and ninety four cents. And because we are in a, um, needs to be obligated to a contract at the end of the year. What I was going to ask was for a kind of general municipal use, um, for. The phrase that accountants like to use is lawful municipal use, uh, but I. I like to think everything we do is lawful.
So it could be used for these types of things in the future.
So what I would, what I would do actually is take funds that have already been expended, because I think building maintenance and that sort of stuff in the plant. Um, upkeep is so important, uh, I would take. Um, expenses that have already incurred, been incurred on that line and journal them to this fund, and then that essentially.
You're gonna back resell money?
Um, so it would, um, I would ask. Because there's only thirty thousand dollars in that fund to begin with.
Yep.
We haven't yet spent twelve thousand dollars. We have encumbered funds, um, going forward and it's twelve thousand dollars. Um, so I, I would ask that the motion is not specific to building maintenance, uh, because I think there's probably about.
You're, you're essentially doing it. To the best, with the most flexibility you can apply.
I'm doing what the state did with our ARPA money, which is essentially washing restricted money, restricted money. Taking, taking lawful municipal use, putting it on this fund, refraining of that money and essentially doing more, so we, we get kind of a two for one. So my, my, that's, yeah, it's my approach.
So I think, yeah, we're still, uh, we still have the motion. So this is still the discussion, just to remind everyone, still the discussion about the additional. Fifty six hundred for COA. So just before we move on to other potential ones, I think we haven't vote, voted on that yet. Cause I think the question came up about whether there's more money that they could. So, anyways, no, 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 it's, it's a good question. I just want to make sure we actually close this one out. So any further discussion on that fifty six hundred for COA? Alright, all in favor? Opposed? Great, great, thank you. Alright, now, let's.
I appreciate, I appreciate your parliamentary, um, attention on that. Um, so like I said, there's twelve thousand five hundred sixty eight dollars and ninety four cents. What I would actually, at, we have, um, a few funds that have. One fund that has two hundred and some odd dollars left in it. Um, so what I would, what I would ask is that the board make a motion that, um, all remaining. Unallocated ARPA funds, um, be allocated to a general municipal use fund, um, for us. And then this, probably next week, early next week, we would journal funds up to that. So rather than vote a specific dollar amount, because I think it will likely be twelve thousand seven hundred dollars, not twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Um, to, to vote, all remaining unallocated ARPA funds into a general municipal use.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I, I do, I, I just wonder if you had a chance from our last meeting to, to this issue with the, with the mystery furnace. Which doesn't seem to be tied into the other firms. And is that a possible? Uh, place to spend some of this money to get this?
Um, I did talk to Dan Byer a little bit about that. He said there was, there was HVAC folks who were here at some point. Um, I think it's gonna be more than twelve thousand dollars to try to tie all that in. Um, we can use it, so what?
Problem, the problem I have with this is, I, I specifically asked that question to those HVAC people three different times. And it needs to come in front of us, it's, it's just, you didn't even know it.
No, and until you said it last meeting.
Right, so, I mean, the, the system is broken, I mean, not just the furnace system, but the process. Of getting this maintenance squared away.
Right. Well, that, that would be something that the maintenance fund that you, you, I mean, that could be applied towards that type of project. And whether or not there would be enough in there for.
I think it would be more than.
Right.
In order for somebody to say, I think they have to at least have a. So, updates. Um, this isn't directly news, this is, I think it's time to look for another HVAC.
I think there's a, there's a clear gap in our operations around this. There's no one who's accountable for bringing that to the board.
Correct.
Facilities manager.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
Over the operations.
Yeah, good point.
Um, I, and I, I don't mean, I don't mean to dismiss your point because it is, it is important to the function of this building. But in terms of using ARPA funds, we're on it, the timeline just kind of.
No, I'm, I'm just, we're already, I know there's a motion on the, on the, on the floor now. You know, allocate and use it, and that's fine, I'm just, just took it as an opportunity.
Can we add that as a future agenda items? I know it's coming. You know, it's specific.
Which part, facilities or, or the HVAC?
Yeah, Mike's point.
I don't think Mike's gonna let the facilities manager get lost, I think that's gonna.
Just checking.
So, any more discussion about the, um, the allocation of the rest of the, our, is it allocation? Yeah, allocation of the rest of the ARPA money? Alright, all in favor? Great.
Right, I, I appreciate that vote and, um, the board's kind of willingness to, to let me figure out. The tying up the end of that, um, because giving you a very specific number with a week and a half left in the year. Um, as the accountant and I are trying to figure out some, so.
Right, so it's just best, because I mean, we don't want to end this with just like, I don't know, yeah, five hundred dollars showing up somewhere that we can't do anything with.
So, I, I quickly do the, so that twelve thousand dollars is point seven percent of the overall.
Yes, uh, you know what would be really nifty would to just maybe compile a list and put it on the website. I don't know if you've already thought about that, but I think it.
This is what.
Well, it's federal tax money that was allocated and that we didn't just frivolously spend, it was spent on, like you said. Big things, ladder trucks and.
The water studies, I think, were.
Water study, sewer study. A lot of stuff, and, and it, it's important for the, for the town to know that.
Yeah.
Sometimes the federal government comes through and does some good things.
I think it's important for the town to see, you know, capital is always this thing, capex is this thing that doesn't happen in Mendon. But I think there's been far more capital investment in the last twenty four months that people don't realize that.
Yeah. So that's a really good point, thanks.
We had the scouts here the other night and, uh, I was telling them, uh, how much it costs to pave Millville. Cause everybody can see Millville, everybody uses Millville, can be see it's been paved. And, uh, yeah, they were extremely surprised, quarter million dollars is a lot of money, right? Um, for what might not seem like a long stretch of road, but now you get a little bit of idea about how much it costs to, to do these sorts of things on a scale. Four hundred and twenty thousand, my estimate was way off.
Wow, yeah.
And also we used, um, recycle in place, so if anyone drove past Millville while they were doing. It's a machine the size, half the size of this room that was scraping up, melting and relaying.
Maybe I was remembering the quarter of a million we allocated from ARPA, is that what I was?
Yeah, so it's essentially a quarter of a million, uh, so what Millville uses is essentially a quarter of a million from, um, land, the land sale account, I believe.
Alright, and then the rest was chapter.
Whatever from chapter ninety, um, which was two years worth of chapter ninety that went into it. But yeah, it was over four hundred thousand dollars. And if it was to do a full depth reclamation, which we use mill, Millville, and then scrape it down and then relay. Um, it would have been well over seven hundred thousand dollars.
I think, uh, but, but to Jason's point, it's important for the, the town taxpayers to understand, when they talk about roads. It's an expensive proposition.
Yeah.
You know, and they were more allocated half a million in supplemental. Probably another two fifty in year three, and that's, you know, seems like a lot, but in the grand scheme, this is the type of thing. I'd actually forgive these words, but I would say a capital debt exclusion focused on pavement. You know, but this gives them a sense of, well, this is what you get for your money. We need to push that out there.
Well, in the pavement study, right, wasn't it like, if you do all this work now and it costs you a hundred million dollars, you do it all in twenty years, you know. It costs you five hundred million. It's like, you know, they, they had this whole, uh, like, um, amortization of pavement. Essentially, uh, and table there that, yeah, that's, that's, it's good to see how much it costs and then.
I think one thing we have to get in front of those, the, um. The cost of not maintaining, right? So we, Millville's beautiful now. How do we maintain that? So what needs to be done in Millville for the next one, two years, three years?
I was just, Bay Street was paved in twenty fifteen. And I was, you know, there's a couple of piles that are opening up.
Right.
And, you know, it has been nine years, right? So that it, well, there's definitely wind and tear, that's never going to, no, the road is just a lot more user, much heavier vehicles than my private road.
Right.
Just doesn't take that long for it to start, for it to start to degrade.
I mean, I think Beta gave, you know, we started to crawl with Beta, we want to get to a point where we're, we're walking before we run. But I think, you know, we need to have that five to ten year look ahead, just around roads.
Yeah, and we have the Route sixteen.
Yeah.
Updates coming very soon in the next year or two here, so.
Yeah.
Oh, right. I'll be here at town hall or something. At Jeremy's office.
Maybe it's the town administrator.
We could put it up at that, the new town campsite we built.
Alright, so I think, are we done with ARPA? I mean, it sounds like we're done with ARPA, it feels like very, like we tidily bundled that off. Okay, so, thank you, Jeremy. And then I think back to you, Jeremy, for the town administrator report.
Alright, uh, thanks, everyone. So, um, some light ones to start. We had our employee potluck, uh, holiday party yesterday, which was great. Um, thank you to, uh, town clerk Ellen Agro, who principally organized the whole thing. And then, uh, Highway Secretary John Dudley organized our Yankee swap, which was a lot of fun. Uh, I ended up with the present I brought. It's always, I'm glad I brought something I liked, uh, but it was, it was a lot of fun and it's nice, um, it's always nice to have. Uh, to see colleagues in kind of a relaxed environment and be able to connect and, and, and to kind of build those relationships outside of. Um, just transactional work sort of stuff, so, uh, I appreciate everyone who participated in that. Um, our, uh, holiday party, our town holiday party, uh, meet and greet your local officials, bring your families, public welcome is this Friday from five to nine. At, um, at South Wicks, um, so I invite members of the public and everyone here on the board to attend, um, I will be there. I, I hope to see all you there. Um, alright, so, uh, the select board policies and procedures document, um, I've sent over to town council. Uh, so that's, um, I tightened that up yesterday, um, that's sent over and she's going to review it to make sure. Um, you didn't obligate yourselves to do illegal things. That's great, so, uh, I am belatedly going to take, uh, Mike Goddard's advice and push the financial policy delivery to January. Um, so I've been working on those, but it is not in a sense where I can, uh, present it to you tonight, so. Uh, financial policies will come over in January, personnel policies, I've talked with, uh, HR coordinator and said our goal is to deliver those in January as well. Uh, we're gonna continue working on those, but you're, you will get the financial policies by your January fifteenth. Um, just, uh, a quick ARPA update, um, our library paving project, which we allocated an additional six thousand eight hundred dollars to in our last meeting. Uh, we got the contract back from, um, the contractor today, uh, this afternoon, so we'll make sure that gets executed, uh, likely tomorrow. Uh, and, and back to him, and that will be a spring twenty twenty five project, uh, to get that project underway. Um, I just said this last meeting, just to remind you all, if there's any, um, deviations and agreed upon scope which require a change order. We did not commit any ARPA money to that, so we'll have to find alternative funding sources to be able, to be able to do that. Uh, I met today, excuse me, committing funds, I met today with, uh, Ty and Bond, who is our identified consultant for the Providence Street. Uh, culvert replacement on how we access, uh, DOT small bridge repair grant funding. Um, so Highway Secretary John Dudley started filling out our initial application for, um, our hundred thousand dollar reimbursable grant for design services. Um, so Highway Secretary will fill that out, um, kind of the, the narrative need sorts of things. I'll fill out on the, the, uh, financial management, it will go to Ty and Bond, fill out the kind of technical specs and we'll submit that. Um, it's a hundred thousand dollar reimbursable grant for, uh, engineering design services. Um, one of the conditions, just to kind of head off, what I imagine will be a public question, one of the, one of the conditions is that you have appropriated. The full amount of the contract, so it's a three hundred thousand dollar contract, so we cannot say, we appropriate two hundred thousand dollars and we're gonna ask the state for a hundred thousand. Our three hundred thousand dollars has to be there and committed first, and then once the grant period, once we are awarded the grant, the next hundred thousand dollars out the door. We can apply for reimbursement, we get that reimbursement, we move those expenses over to that reimbursement fund. And then there's a hundred thousand dollars extra in the fund that we've, we've committed for engineering. And we can ask town meetings to revoke that into a construction fund, so it's not like that money. Either goes away or is tied up on something, we will keep that within the project, uh, but we have to have the money committed to design.
But it's, it's tied until the reimbursement, right?
Yeah, so there is a time value to that, that we, time value to that money that we lose, but that's the way the grant works and it's, the time value of it is less than a hundred thousand dollars. And then that same approach, um, for the construction piece, uh, but the construction reimbursable grant is five hundred thousand dollars. And that's phase two of the small bridge, so as we cross that bridge, we'll get there, um, and we'll, uh, I'll keep the, keep the board updated.
Are you going to have to come up with special timing in order to bake that?
It's good, there's going to be, uh. It's, it is, it is a year off, um, so, um, we will be purposeful in how we time our either town meeting votes. For an appropriation of, uh, our capital stabilization or free cash or, or what a, a debt operational look like. So, probably, you know, six to nine months from now will be serious conversations on how we structure that. Had a couple of meetings on our website design, so we've submitted our, um, you know, our design preferences, some, some photos, which include, um, some great sort of drone shots of town from, from Nick Ersting, the Police Department, and some historic photos from the Store Society and, um, uh, I and some other staff members went through some, um, other Civic Plus websites, um, and said what we like and what we don't like about specific design elements and sent that over. Um, so we've got a meeting tomorrow with Civic Plus, um, on what the next steps are, proof of the timeline. So I have, yes, it plus me tomorrow at eleven. Um, so we're, uh, we're moving forward to that. We're still at a kind of June, July kickoff, our, uh, ultimate launch of our, of our new website. Uh, but it's, it's moving along. They are, they are rigid in their timelines. Um, I, I got meeting invites for like May, um, earlier today, so I'm, I'm glad.
So they were pretty clear about their project management plan.
Yeah, I had to, I had to sign a letter of engagement that agreed to their meeting dates. Um, so I moved to basically.
Yes, I mean, at least you know it's going to get done, right?
So I will not be double booked for May fourteenth. Um, so yeah, I, I appreciate that because not, not everything in, in local government is that. Yeah. Uh, we also have a capital improvement working group on Thursday, um, so, um, I had kind of folding that into, there was an all staff meeting earlier today, um, where we talked about, um, I said I did a Q one financial report to the board. I want to do a Q two, a bit more in-depth financial operational report. So I spoke for, you know, not, uh, deferential to what they do day to day. So I say, hey, I don't know what's important to you in your day to day. Tell me what it is you've done over the past six months and let me communicate that. So I'm hopeful that our Q two mid-year report in January will be financial and operational in nature. Um, Katie and I are going to kick off some annual report stuff with department heads soon. Uh, my budget memo is going to go out, uh, next week, um, about our expectations on January meetings and whatnot. Um, and then we had a, um, uh, presentation from our voluntary benefits coordinator, um, uh, combined insurance, taking in a net with, that with staff are coming back on January second to, to new fire and police departments in a more coordinated manner. Um, so these are additional benefits that don't cost the town anything, but are a benefit to employees. Um, and we get a better guaranteed issue operation and a better rate when we say to the vendor, yes, you can have access to kind of everyone at the same time. And there's no obligation, uh, to folks, um, which makes it kind of a, a, um, my perspective. Last two things here in my, my notes, um, we are part of, as the board is imagining, we are part of, uh, Regional Dispatch with the MECC, the Metacomic Emergency Community Nation Center, um, which is us, Renton, Millville, Franklin, or Norfolk, I think, or other.
Yeah, or.
It's again, it's a small, small regional. Community center. Um, they are in current dialogue with, um, seeing what a merger with SEMREC would look like, which is Foxborough, Easton, Norton and Plainville. There's a million, as you can imagine, the merger between two regional organizations, there's a million kinks to be ironed out. Really, they're two regional organizations that deliver the same end product, same goals and the same priorities. Um, so, uh, I think eventually it will get there within the next two years, maybe. Um, Fire seems to be, uh, closer and more on board than Police. Um, so we'll see how that goes, but, um.
Is the chief talking to us about?
Yeah.
So where I grew up in Pennsylvania, all dispatches, uh, county based, um, so there's only sixty five dispatch centers in all of Pennsylvania, which is a bigger, more populous city than Massachusetts, and there's a lot more dispatch centers here. Um, so yeah, absolutely, there are economies of scale. And I think that's, so there's state money to support that kind of stuff. Um, it's complicated and being able to qualify for it, um, but I think, um, generally bigger is better.
Is there a question of services being delivered if that merger goes through? I mean, I, I didn't think it was, um, apples to apples in all cases, but there might have been some, some.
Quality service.
Yeah, Chief Percy, I had a couple of questions ever out there.
Watching the station during certain hours.
Yeah, so SEMREC, yeah, SEMREC doesn't have dark stations and we have dark stations. So that's, that is the principal, um, point of contention with the police chiefs, uh, which is still certainly an open question. The fire piece, there's a software question, but it seems to have sorted itself out by, you know, I forget which one, but one had a much better software package than the other said, yeah, we'd like that. Uh, so it's an open question, but I, I, I think it's generally, um, like, 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 you know, economies of scale if you have, and it also helps with staffing. Um, each group is, is struggling with staffing improvement and retention, and then they're fighting with each other for dispatchers, uh, whereas if you're one organization, you can offer one contract.
And it, it will actually slow, should slow down the escalating costs. It's not about seeing, it, it's, we're already getting huge, uh, discounts and, you know, supplements.
So the state right now is subsidizing our membership into the MECC. We're in year, I forget, we're, we're nearing the end of our on brand.
Well, this current budget cycle, we had our first.
Yes.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
It wasn't supposed to be.
Right.
There was some kind of addition.
So we're paying.
We're paying for it now. They're still subsidizing some, but just not as much as they.
And I want to be clear, it is still a lot cheaper than.
Region, we're big fans of regionalizing services, so it's not a question of that. It's making sure that the level of service is maintained. And we don't run any risks. I'll defer to you and Chief Percy to kind of say we're good to go.
And I certainly defer to both the chiefs in terms of this, this operation.
The main issue is that we never should have, as a state, we never should have suspended the county government. And they did that. Eight, so we don't need county government. Every city in town can do it, and now. Wish we still had.
So I would say in term, in the realm of communications, uh, today, the fire department ladder truck was at the police station, uh, tending to one of the radio towers. That was at the top of the, top of the, so, uh, the fire chief likes to say, he was like, you know, we're very lucky to have this ladder truck, so we like to bring her around town and help.
Give, give a million dollars for us.
Great.
Eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
The ladder truck was eighty, eighty thousand.
Oh, it's the pumper that was doing it, yeah.
But yeah, the ladder truck was surplus by another municipality.
Oh, right, right.
Cause they couldn't get, couldn't get.
Got my equipment mixed up.
I say, can't keep track of all that new equipment down there at the station.
Honestly, when I, and I saw the contract for the eighty thousand dollar ladder truck, I assumed there was a zero missing. Cause it's like, yeah, a week here. I was like, no, this is an eight hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah.
So no, the town.
But.
Very, very fortunate. And then lastly, um, last meeting, uh, the board voted to combine two ARPA allocations into one for a forty-five thousand dollar fund for, um, senior center and municipal building, you know, assessment in future. So, um, I have a draft contract with a, um, with that architectural firm. Um, I, um, spoke with multiple firms um, in multiple disciplines, whether it was the kind of OPM construction consultant, whether it was the architecture firm. Um, and I think we'll end up with a, with a blend of the smaller contractor, you know, PM firm is a kind of gut check third party, um, outside consultant, and then the larger contract with an architectural firm that does, um, kind of a tabletop exercise to say, you know, we know what a new build at North Ave looks like. Here's your, your metrics at different locations, whether it's existing facilities, new facilities, existing facility, rent on place, add to, add to a new, add to an existing municipal facility. Um, so we have that contract out and, um, you know, it, it needs to be out, it needs to be appropriate or it needs to be committed to the contract by December thirty first, so it will be.
So I'm sorry, did you say two, two contracts then, or, or this?
So my anticipation is I have a one forty thousand dollar architectural contract and then one five thousand dollar. They're an OPM firm, but they do construction consulting, um, just because I would like to have a independent kind of set of eyes on, you know, say, here, here's what you can do with this information going forward or, uh, this is why this does or doesn't work, um, from a third party view.
Great. Alright, thank you. I think, I think that will be helpful and hopefully will answer a lot of questions that we've had from the public.
And just to, sorry, because I brought this up, sorry, I said that's not, so I, uh, there was a, um, uh, I, because I brought this up to some select board members and we had, we talked about it briefly, um, there was a, um, a redo Regional Economic Development Opportunity Act, um, grant from the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce in twenty twenty-two for a facade improvement program, um, in Mendon and Upton, we, I believe we were joint grantees, um, and that there were no programs in Mendon that, or no applicants in Mendon that fit the program. Um, so there was an MOA signed at the time that committed our share of funds, I believe it was twelve thousand dollars, to Upton related projects. I then started receiving invoices from these Upton, um, uh, sign folks who we had approved there, our, uh, BVCC, us, CMRDC, who was our consultant, proved their projects and said, please reimburse us for fifty percent of our sign. And, uh, there's no documentation on where this money behind it was. So anyway, um, I'd initially said, let's use some ARPA funds. There's twelve thousand five hundred dollars left in my estimation. Let's use this twelve thousand dollars to pay these sorts of things. Um, I, just yesterday and today in conversation with BVCC, um, the paperwork was never filed with them to actually have us receive those funds. So, uh, I'm now working to get those funds from Black, Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce. Um, and they, we will be able to create our own fund, have those grant funds come in and pay us. We won't need to.
Dissective work.
Yeah, I, I called our accountant and I said, where is this? And they're like, what are you talking about? So it was, um, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't difficult work. It was just wrangling, who do I need to ask these questions to? Um, so anyway, um, so that kind of didn't, it saved us being able to use the ARPA funds to do that, which means we can move more funds off of the general fund onto ARPA, which means free cash is thus increased by the end of fiscal twenty. Um, but just because that ended in kind of floating out there. So there are, if you hear rumblings, there are folks who have been approved for a program all the way back in fiscal twenty twenty-three, calendar year twenty twenty-two, um, who submitted invoices for expenses in fall of twenty twenty-four, who will not end up being paid until early twenty twenty-five because of the flow of funds and what, what we need to be able to do. But it will get paid. That was the stiffest thing. That's, that's all.
Alright, so, uh, that was, that was the end of your town administrator report?
Yes.
So then, um, we have a few, uh, housekeeping things to wrap up before we have some executive sessions or an executive session. So future agenda items, I know a few things came up in discussion tonight. I don't know, Katie, you were keeping tabs on those. Uh, but are there any additional ones? Um, but as, as always, you know, please do email, um.
So we have the few, the, the HVAC mystery furnace, those people will come up at a better time, um, but, uh.
We should give it a name like Oscar.
The thing, right, the, the Recreation Field Committee, I have a, a member of the public, um, and current, uh, amended representative to BBT, um, be interested in serving.
Fantastic.
Um, at, at Cry. So, um, as I've reached out to the kind of institutional members who are identified. Um, so I'm hopeful that come January, um, we'll have a more fully fledged membership available to, to be confirmed by the fore.
It's, I thought we, it was Dan going to reach out to the youth organization. Do you know if that's happening?
I think, I mean, I ran into him and I, we talked about this a little bit. I don't know if you also, yeah, I mean, it, I think he is planning on it. That was, you know, um.
I talked to him today and he said, it's like, sum the list, everything, so.
Yeah.
Well.
Do you want to add MUCP, Mendon, Upton, Upton Community Projects, reach out to them directly as well?
I think, I mean, I think somebody should. I'm not sure who the right person would be, um, there's a, uh, yeah.
They're doing, I mean, they're going ahead with some of the work, you know, walking paths and things. It'd be good to get an update from them.
That's true. I mean, yeah, if they. In presenting to us, for example.
Yeah, so I think we met with them last year.
They came by, but I don't think they presented them as far.
Yeah, I mean, and they invited us to their meeting. It was, um, but, I mean, we haven't invited, I, I don't know that they've had an agenda item, and I think that might be a possibility and maybe, so if we can rope anyone into the, um.
Yeah, so I'll try to make that a, a kind of more holistic agenda, right, regardless of committee. Make sure we have the, like I said, the institutional folks and then MUPC, so I will, I will reach out.
I think they'll actually, if we reach out to them, they're probably going to say, we'd love to come and meet with you. Given.
Right.
Where, where they're going with their projects.
Yeah. And I guess a sort of tangent to that is I, I did attend the school committee meeting on Monday and I, you know, if you've been attending the budget subcommittee meetings.
Capitals.
Uh, so I think, I mean, they, hopefully, hopefully you've been in touch regularly also with them, so I think. To hear about the requests, um, as they figure them out. So there aren't specific numbers yet, but they've been telegraphing pretty strongly that there will be some requests coming up, um, this, this coming year, so.
I think they've been pretty direct in terms of there will be a new project there in. And then a field project has, is a little bit less.
I think they, less concrete. I think they're trying to figure out how they want to go forward with the bundling their capital projects, of which the field is part of that, whether they include it or don't. I think those conversations are still happening.
And then I know, I mean, we're coming into budget season, so probably, um, you know, I think it might be nice to get some overview of that, like, you know, come in sometime in January, just so that we all have an idea of like how that's going to fit together and.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, you cert, this just absolutely slipped mine. You should have, you certainly should have had a budget calendar, kind of by this, what, what. So, yeah, at the January fifteenth meeting, we'll have a budget calendar. What the meetings are, what the votes are, yeah.
Thank you.
To be fair, we talked about it last time and, and said it was fine for January, so don't stress that.
But it, you know, by January fifteenth, I'll have like started my budget meetings with department heads, so it's reasonable for you to expect a calendar before the calendar begins.
Life's happened.
Um, so I guess, yeah, we'll expect, um, maybe more agenda items to come through by email. This is kind of a, a long, you know, our, our next meetings are a ways off due to the holidays, um. I have, you know, I, there's part of me that expects something to come up where we might need to have a short meeting, um, to vote on something. Of course, we don't know about it yet, because if we did, we would have had them on tonight's agenda. So, uh, but there is a, it's, you know, it's almost a month and like, it's a really long time for us to go, so. Um, it, it'll be great if we can actually make it through to January fifteenth without needing to meet. Um, and then, uh, right after that, so that we have our next regular meeting on January fifteenth. Um, then we have our goal setting meeting, which we set because this is, we, this is a, January is a, uh, five Wednesday month, um, so to a little bit make up for the first Wednesday being on holiday, we're going to have an extra meeting. And that will be following the, um, Connect three fifty-one conference, which, um, I think, I don't know who all is. I know I will be attending, I think Jason, Mike, yeah. Like.
TBD.
TBD, TBD, okay. And you'll, you'll be there and Katie, will you be there as well? Great, so hopefully we'll all be, uh, pumped full of ideas about, that we will bring to our goal setting meeting.
We did get an email from our, uh, from council that they've moved their, their, uh, hospitality.
Okay.
Dinner to the restaurant that's adjacent.
Ah, okay. I had not, I had not seen that. Um, great, so we'll, we'll be in con, in communication about that. Um, and also, I guess, right, backtracking, but for agenda items, January fifteenth, I think we will a little bit solidify our goal setting meeting. I think.
Yeah, we'll say in advance of that, just everybody think about what I, Mike, my government has come to me a few times and I, I think it resounds really well is that, uh, what, what is a goal for everybody that, um, you know, we have to be attainable. People talk about smart goals, right? So we, it has, has to be attainable within the fiscal year. So we're not talking about we're talking about important changes, but we're not talking about, I guess, wholesale organizational sorts of changes. So what, what can we accomplish in the next six months? How can we measure that? How can, you know, make that time bound? How can we make it specific enough? Specific, measurable, actionable, reasonable, time bound. I always wrote the R, relevant and timed down. So just kind of keep that in mind when we're talking about goals. We're not saying develop a charter.
And then, yeah. So, right. So January 29th is our goal setting meeting, which we don't know, haven't decided where it's going to be, I guess. But we'll, we'll get there.
I like the police station. We've done that a couple of times. It's not here.
Yeah. And then February 5th is our next regular meeting after that. And then after that, we expect it, well, at least have it be the first and third Wednesday and probably with budget season, maybe some extra ones. And Jeremy will let us know sort of what to expect for that.
Yeah. It's part of the 115 budget calendar.
Yes. Fantastic. Okay. So then was there anything else that we wanted to address before an executive sessions?
I just want to say a quick thank you to the police department and to Jeremy for showing up for the scouts last week. They, it was terrible weather. It was at night. We had all that, the storms going on. So, you know, they had other things to do, but they, they stayed back to talk to the kids and, yeah, and that's always a good time. And they got to tour these buildings. They got to see a health meeting where they talked about contaminants in the wells. So there was like an interesting health meeting going on. Yeah.
And they got to go to holding cells, which seems
They got to go to the holding cells, which they really liked. And Jeremy tried to get them into public service. So
Good, good. Start.
It was, yes. I really appreciate taking the time.
That's awesome.
Great.
It was, yeah, it was, it was great. And then, you know, just seeing, so seeing, you know, kids interested in that. And then, you know, both Chief Kersey and I trying to, you know, address 11 year olds and then also engage their parents about what like CPA funds pay. But then also that same, like you, like you said, the weather was bad. So there was a couple of guys at the highway department who were held over and overtime to make sure the Providence Street Culvert, you know, maintained and, you know, they were clearing some trees in the process. So for me, as a person who tries really hard to get out of my office, but ends up spending most of my time in an office and meetings. It was really great to both connect with youth in the community and then see, you know, the highway, you know, see public safety.
I knew that was right afterwards.
Yeah. I, I left police station, went down to highway. So it was, it was a nice, you know, connection to both community and then, you know, the, that real, the real work that, that's up in town to
All right. Well, thank you. So then I think that we have a couple of executive session items. So I believe it is me who will make the motion. And we will not be reconvening in open session. So just
So I believe you can say purposefully.
Yes. Okay. Great. So I moved to enter executive session under MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21 for Purpose Six, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. And Purpose Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the shares that chair so declares, the board will not reconvene in open session for the purposes of adjournment, adjournment. And sorry, do we need a roll call vote for this? Okay. That's what I thought. And so we'll do a roll call vote. Actually, sorry, discussion. Roll call vote. Brugge's eye.
Should I?
Goddard a.
Peter, I.
All right. So thank you very much to members of the public for watching.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.